Chair Adams, we have a quorum, so you can go ahead and start the meeting once it is 6:30, which should be in just a little bit.
Perfect. Thanks, Anna. Greetings. I'm Chair Adams. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which Commissioner members are participating this evening. Commissioner McCann.
Present.
Commissioner McAvoy.
Present.
Commissioner Mettler.
Present.
Commissioner Speck.
Present.
Commissioner Winter. Let the records show that Commissioner Winter is excused tonight from the meeting. And I also need to call one more Commissioner, Commissioner Holmes. And it looks like Commissioner Holmes is also excused this evening. We are now at Commission Communications. Commission, any communications? Looks like no communications. We're now at Staff Communications. Staff, any communications?
Good evening, Chair Adams. I'm Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager here in the Community Development Department. I just have one, one thing to note, which is that on September 3, there will not be a Planning Commission meeting. However, we are holding a training, which will be in person at Council Chambers at Beaverton City Hall. So just wanted to make sure you all have that on your calendar. We are going to have a, a fun training to prepare for holding Planning Commission meetings in person. So just wanted to verbally say that. I know that you've been, you've gotten all kinds of news about that via email, but I wanted to share it tonight verbally as well.
Great. Thanks, Anna. New business. The first item on the agenda is the application for LU 32025-00329, HMT Outdoor Court Expansion. Case file numbers CU 32025-00327, DR 32025-00328, and TP 12025-00533. The applicant has requested a continuance to a date uncertain. Once a date has been determined for the public hearing, a new public notice will be sent. Is there a motion to continue?
I'll, let's see. So I guess I'll move to continue the hearing to a date to be determined.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McCann. Is there a second?
I. Go ahead, Jensen.
I'd second.
Commissioner Mettler, thank you for your second. Is there any discussion? All right, no discussion. A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Commissioner McCann.
Yea.
Commissioner Mettler.
Yea.
Commissioner McAvoy.
Yea.
Commissioner Speck.
Yea.
And myself, Chair Adams, is a yea as well. Motion passes. After a vote of the motion, we will state the following. A public hearing for LU 32025-00329, HMT Outdoor Court Expansion is continued to a date uncertain. Training. Planning Division Manager Anna Slatinsky will not provide training for insignificant Beaverton planning projects So is that correct?
Well, there's no project number because this isn't a public hearing. It's just a presentation. And I'll just go ahead and get started. So this is, this is an informal presentation. I'm going to share my screen. I have a PowerPoint here. And there it is. Okay, so this presentation is really to provide Planning Commission with some history and context about planning projects in order to help really the commission feel more oriented and prepared for, for land use hearings that they encounter. And also just to give the commission generally a better sense of how, how the city implements and conducts the kind of planning and land use activities that are an important part of city work. Sorry, I'm attempting to advance the slides. Huh, I tried this before and it worked. There we go. There's my little arrows. Okay. So, as I said, this is going to be an informal presentation. So please feel free to ask questions as I'm going along. We are going to cover some of the different types of projects that the city undertakes, really planning projects, not every kind of project. We're really going to be focusing on projects for which Planning Commission has a specific designed, defined role. So typically, this would be Planning Commission ultimately will make a recommendation to City Council about adoption of a development code or comprehensive plan amendment. There are other projects that, that will come to Planning Commission for a presentation where Planning Commission provides input but may not be a decision maker. So some examples of that would be the Climate Action Plan, for example, or the, the Housing Beaverton Project, which identified, it was a state mandated work to kind of look at the housing needs of Beaverton into the future and identify actions the city would take in order to meet that housing need, but did not in and of itself require any specific decisions from Planning Commission. But we'll go over some of the, some of the projects from the last several years and discuss a few of them in greater detail. These are bigger projects. We'll talk a little bit about how projects are selected and conducted. And then, and then again, talk kind of in general about kind of a fuller list of projects, but then discuss in detail just, just a few of them. So projects, planning projects will typically address at least one of the following. It's, I don't think it's ever really just one. But we undertake planning projects to do long-term planning for a specific area. So two of the projects that I'm going to share with you later in more detail address a specific geographic area, one being downtown Beaverton, the other being Cooper Mountain Community Plan. But doing long-term planning that addresses a specific part of the city is one way to really kind of dig in to what the city's kind of long-term goals and policy will be for that area and take a look at how those could play out with development in that area specifically. There are also projects that look at developing, updating, or implementing policy. So these are not necessarily specific to a particular area of the city, but would address a topic such as housing or economic development or transportation. We do projects in order to implement federal, state, or regional mandates, other requirements. And usually, as I said before, these would include amendments to the Development Code or Comprehensive Plan, sometimes without really making major policy changes. So, under the umbrella of mandates, there are a number of things that Beaverton needs to kind of do on, on an ongoing basis. We are required to operate our development review and land use in, in compliance with federal requirements such as the Americans with Disabilities Act. We need to respond to sometimes case law. The example here is that there was a Supreme Court case that addressed a sign code question that was a First Amendment case. That is something that had repercussions for land use and, and planning permitting nationwide. Program requirements such as FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. All of these are examples of federal requirements that, that affect how we work and will sometimes prompt a specific project for Beaverton to undertake. We are required at a state level to maintain a comprehensive plan that addresses Oregon's statewide planning goals. And in general, we need to be conducting our land use permitting activities pursuant to ORS, which is state law, and OAR, which is the Oregon Administrative Rules. And then there are regional level requirements, mostly stemming from Metro. I've shared this list with you in a previous presentation, but here's a list of recent mandates at the state level that affect the work of planning. I'm not going to read through these now, but these are frequently the, either the reason for undertaking a project or they are being addressed as a component of one or more projects in Beaverton. This little kind of flow chart here is a handy graphic. This was also shared in a previous presentation. But it shows how the different levels of requirements kind of layer in order to affect city-specific policy and regulatory documents. And so we can see here, there's the Oregon Revised Statutes, there's the Administrative Rules, we have Metro Plans and Code, and then we have a relationship internally at the city between the Comprehensive Plan, the zoning code, and then those individual land use decisions. So this has all been kind of review of things that we've talked about previously. Projects, there are always more projects on the list than we actually can do. It's kind of the dynamic of, of life, right? You have more things on the wish list than there are resources to pursue at a particular time. So how do we decide which projects to undertake? We take a look at a variety of factors, many of which overlap. We have the priorities established by the City Council. City Council, a few years ago, started taking a more deliberate approach to setting priorities to guide the work of the city. And so we do refer back to those council priorities in order to make sure that the work that staff is doing on projects is consistent with those priorities and that we're implementing, implementing the, the efforts that the council has designated as being the highest priorities. We need to keep track of compliance deadlines for those mandates from the state and sometimes the federal and regional level. Those will shape our work program. That work program development also takes into consideration what resources we think are necessary, how long work will take. And we try to do a good job at getting the work planned out in a way which will be efficient for the planning team, but that also takes into account the work from other city staff and other divisions. For example, sometimes we need the participation of the engineering team or of the city attorney's office. That's a big one. We need to make sure that we're not overloading those teams because they also have their own efforts that they're undertaking. So we try to coordinate and balance those. And we also want to see if there are opportunities to group things together in a single project, which would be more efficient than tackling them as separate, smaller projects. The Code Maintenance Project, which is one that we've talked with you about recently, we now do on an annual basis. That's going to be coming to you for a hearing in October. And this is something that we haven't always done every year, but we are committing to do it every year. We did it in 2024 this year, and then we plan to do it going out into future years. This will help us stay on top of some of the miscellaneous things that we need to take care of. We also sometimes will prioritize a project because there is funding available from the state or the regional level to get assistance in staffing up those projects by using consultants. So sometimes funding opportunities will help us get a project done. It usually is not the only reason that we do a project, but it is helpful if we're trying to make the most of limited resources. If we can take advantage of grant opportunities to kind of leverage staff work in order to get more done, then we, we look for those opportunities. And then, of course, and this is kind of relates to some of the previous bullet points. We look at staff resources within Planning Division, but of course, also in other places. We look at whether it's appropriate to hire consultants and whether there are funding sources that can be used in order to kind of put all of those things together. One thing that we also look at is, you know, from a community perspective, are, is there, is there the potential that the city would be kind of overloading the community with a lot of different big proposals that they might have trouble tracking or might not have the bandwidth to follow at the same time? So that's another consideration that we bring to determining which projects to do and kind of what order. When there's a project that is on our list to move forward, we do kind of some iterative scoping. We try to describe what the project is trying to achieve, those objectives, and then lay out the structure of that project, what the timeframe will be, what the rules and responsibilities will be, what resources are necessary. Do we need to hire a consultant? Can we do the work with internal staff? And then the question about engagement isn't just, is there bandwidth in the community to be able to participate in the project? There's also looking at what kind of input the project will need from internal staff, from partners at other jurisdictions and service providers, and again, from the community. And rightsizing that engagement is really important. There are some major projects that really will need to have a lot of input from the community when it's a big decision that affects the community in a significant way or when there is, when we, we know that we need to hear from the community to understand how to, how to really make good choices and decisions as part of the project. So we look at all of those different factors when we're really settling on what the engagement approach will be for a particular project. This is the kind of big list of projects. This is, this is roughly looking at the last 10 years. This is not an exhaustive list of every project. There are, there are some projects and amendments to the Development Code that are not on that list. Doesn't mean that they're trivial, but we had to, I just wanted to spit into one slide here. And this, again, this doesn't include projects that, for which the Planning Commission did not have a formal, a formal decision-making role. We are used to talking about the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, but of course, the South Cooper Mountain Community Plan was actually completed in 2015. So that is kind of the early big project that's on this list. We also updated two full comp plan chapters in 20, well, 2015 was a housing element update. And then the land use element update was updated in 2018. And actually, that might have been 2017. And those are basically full rewrites of those chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. Back in the day, the state used to require jurisdictions to go through. It was called periodic review of the Comprehensive Plans, which was where the state would work with a local jurisdiction to kind of review every aspect of the Comprehensive Plan and make sure that it's upstate and doing what it needs to do. But that ultimately was, that practice was put on hold. I don't know if it will ever come back. It just was really quite labor-intensive. And because Comprehensive Plans are very big, it ended up being a little bit endless sometimes in a churn for having those things updated. The approach that Beaverton has taken for, for the last several years is to update the Comprehensive Plan really on a chapter-by-chapter basis. The Transportation System Plan, which of course is underway now, is actually an update of the Comprehensive Plan. The Transportation System Plan is also known as the Transportation Element in the Comprehensive Plan. So again, we're taking a kind of chunk-by-chunk approach to keeping that comp plan updated. A Development Code Amendment, which was related to the Supreme Court case that I mentioned earlier, was, was sign code update. We had to overhaul our sign code in order to come into alignment with what that Supreme Court case said. Sign codes are tricky. The signs don't, don't come to Planning Commission typically. They are kind of an over-the-counter permit. But again, it is quite tricky to stay, stay in good stead with the First Amendment and regulate signs. It gets, it gets a little bit weird. So we did a full sign code update back in 2017. And also related to federal law, we updated our wireless code. We actually came back and did that twice because the FCC actually prescribes approaches to regulating wireless facilities that affected how we could regulate and process those permits as well. Before we had code maintenance, we called a kind of miscellaneous update to the Development Code, the Omnibus, and we had Omnibus projects in 2016 and in 2019. Downtown Design Project, we'll talk about in some more detail. So I'm going to skip that for now. The Housing Options Project, also, again, these ones highlighted in blue are going to be addressed in a little bit more detail later. There was a significant update to parking regulations in Beaverton. Also, the Shelter Code Project addressed where homeless shelters could be located. And then we get into code maintenance last year in 2024. Again, we're working on the 2025 version. We'll talk in detail about the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. And of course, underway now are Designing Walkable Places, that code maintenance 2025, and Go Beaverton, which is the TSP update. So getting into the Downtown Design Project, this is, this is a project that I think was really kind of fun and juicy. The, the goal really was to create a more vibrant downtown, pretty straightforward. Part of the history is that, you know, when the light rail was built out, out through, out through the West Side back in the 90s, there was a big regional planning effort to identify where, where significant growth could occur in relationship to that really significant infrastructure investment that the region made. And a lot of the zoning in downtown and in other areas was actually updated in order to reflect those aspirations. But the truth is that the zoning still wasn't really tailored to effectively facilitate that development. And that's part of why the more urban-dense development in downtown Beaverton was a little bit slow to emerge, not the only factor, but one of them. And so the purpose of the Downtown Design Project was to remove some of those regulatory obstacles to desired development and to really do it in a thoughtful way that considered getting high-quality design in downtown, particularly focusing on the pedestrian realm and really creating that sense of vibrancy in downtown that was adopted in 2020. The first step of that project was actually doing an urban design framework. So this was, rather than diving into writing Development Code regulations, this was really a step where staff worked with consultants to kind of do some visioning for what it meant to have a vibrant downtown. There was a lot of talk about wanting to have a vibrant downtown, about wanting to really have a recognizable center for Beaverton. What people would talk about is that they don't know where downtown Beaverton is. So this was before the Reiser was built. It was, it was before a lot of the recent development in downtown had occurred. And so there was this kind of recognition of the potential for downtown Beaverton to be something that was more of a, kind of more, more of a place that the community recognized as really being the center of the city. And so the urban design framework really looked at that in a kind of qualitative way, looking at the streets, looking at the different parts of downtown, identifying some of the challenges. And that framework was then the foundation for moving on to the next phase of the project, which was overhauling the regulatory structure for downtown. So we expanded the downtown regional center boundary. We overhauled the zoning by creating four new zoning districts to kind of really hone in on what the, what the, what the desired development was in those areas, to recognize the historic district in Beaverton, to think about height, to think about density, to think about open spaces, to think about how, how buildings would interact with the street in a way that would really create that, that, again, the word, we started saying that the vibrancy should be like a bingo card or drinking game or something because it's really the word we kept coming back to. But there isn't necessarily a great replacement for it, kind of capturing that sense of activity and vitality, having more people downtown, more places to live, more places to do business, more services. And, and so all of those things are part of the thought process in overhauling these regulations for downtown. I want to focus in a little bit on one of the things that became, was the subject of a lot of conversation. And that is some new limitations on vehicle sales and service in the downtown area that were adopted through the Downtown Design Project. These, this slide and the next slide were taken from some presentations from 2019. So every word may not be consistent with exactly what was adopted, but I think it's pretty right on. And so the, the desire was to really encourage those, you know, really low-density, land-intensive, vehicle-related uses, like the car dealerships, to move out of downtown, to free up those properties for more intense development that would really make better use of this land, which was in the center of Beaverton, which had great access to transit, had this existing infrastructure. And so these are, these are the changes that, that were made. So basically, for the existing vehicle-related businesses downtown, those uses may continue to operate if, if they, if they essentially kind of continue doing what they're doing now in the same physical structure. But if the use leaves the site, then it cannot be reestablished if it's been more than one year after that use vacates. The structures, again, the structures can be maintained, they can be, they can be kept in good shape, but they can't be expanded. And if there is a natural disaster or something like that, then there is a limitation on how much of that structure can be destroyed and then rebuilt for that particular use. And so then the flip side, right, is here, is that these uses may not expand, right? Either the site area where the use is conducted or the, the area of the building where these uses are conducted. And they can't move to a different part of the site if they weren't already occupying that site. Again, the structures can't expand. You can't build new structures in order to accommodate these uses. So these together were really the subject of a lot of thoughtful discussion, not just with staff, but also with Planning Commission and Council. After the adoption of the Downtown Design Project, some of the auto dealerships did appeal and ultimately, ultimately withdrew those appeals. There was also an effort to bring forward a further, a further text amendment to, to moderate these, these new limitations a little bit. But City Council ultimately decided that they wanted to stick to the approach that had been adopted with the Downtown Design Project by had been adopted with the downtown design project by basically being really clear that the future of downtown would be one where, where those more active uses, that did not include a lot of, you know, surface car dealerships was not, was not what the city was intending to create. The next project I want to talk about is the housing options project. This is Beaverton's implementation of middle housing, which had a fair amount of discussion in the mid teens. And a number of jurisdictions were really starting to think about that it made sense to allow for more housing variety than the zoning codes in place allowed. Lots of, lots of areas like Beaverton, lots of cities like Beaverton had pretty broad swaths where the only use that was permitted would be a detached, single family home, really very restrictive and not even necessarily reflective of, of the existing development in those places. So Beaverton initiated the housing options project to take a look at how Beaverton wanted to implement middle housing and housing variety. And with the goals on the screen, right, to provide more housing, to encourage diverse housing options, to give flexibility to property owners about what types of housing they could build and address affordability issues. Ultimately, this was adopted in 2022, but there was a, there was a hiccup midway, which is that House Bill 2001, which actually requires cities in Oregon to allow for middle housing, was adopted at the state level partway through Beaverton's housing options project. So we knew that the approach that Beaverton was taking, it really made sense to make sure that it was going to be consistent with these state requirements. But we didn't know exactly how they would play out because after a new piece of law is adopted, there's often a rulemaking process at the state level. And so when House Bill 2001 was adopted, we, we hit pause on the housing options project and actually participated in the rulemaking process that DLCD, the Department of Land, Department of Land Conservation and Development went through. And when that rulemaking process was completed, we kind of restarted the housing options project with a much better understanding of what we would need to do to be in compliance with state law. So HB 2001 was fairly prescriptive about how local jurisdictions needed to allow for middle housing. In some ways, those state rules made it a little bit awkward for us to write zoning that worked great for Beaverton. And there are some ways that it continues to make it a little bit awkward. However, in my opinion, it actually pushed Beaverton to allow more flexibility than perhaps we would have ended up with without that state requirement. It's hard to say because we didn't go through the whole process of determining what Beaverton wanted to do, kind of left to its own devices. But the result is that Beaverton is now allowing a lot of flexibility in the lower density residential neighborhoods in the city to build duplexes, triplexes, even quadplexes, as well as cottage clusters and townhomes. And I will show you the zoning map. So on the left side of the screen is the updated land use map. And Beaverton has these two maps. There's the land use designation map, and then there's the zoning districts. And we made some updates to the land use designations and then also the zoning district. It may not be super easy to see on this slide, but this shows the entirety of the city with its kind of complicated boundaries. The areas that are pale gray were not, did not have the zoning updated through this project, but the areas that are brown, yellow, and dark gray were updated. You can see it's really, really the majority of the city was affected by this, by this project. It overhauled these lower density and not, not even all, not even totally lower density. We did make some changes to the multiple, kind of the multi-family district that Beaverton has as well. But it represents a large portion of the city. The areas that we did not, didn't, were not affected were the mixed use, commercial and industrial zoning districts. But it was a pretty, pretty significant change for the city in terms of a lot of greater flexibility. Ultimately, though, the, the impact of this was not, was not super dramatic. A lot of jurisdictions in Oregon, a lot of people in Oregon were concerned that allowing for greater housing flexibility and variety would immediately result in a huge amount of development in these lower density neighborhoods. And that really hasn't been the case. There have been in some specific areas in other cities. In Beaverton, it has not, it has not led to a significant uptick or dramatic changes in, in neighborhoods. Moving on to the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, Commissioner McCann was here for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. So there's a lot of familiarity there. Chair Adams, you were here for just the end part. But for other folks on the commission, I thought it would be really helpful to provide an overview of, of this really important planning effort that was recently concluded. So before the Cooper Mountain Community Plan was initiated, the Cooper Mountain Urban Reserve had to be added to urban growth boundary. And so this was, this was proposed initially in 2018. Metro takes a periodic look at the urban growth boundary to determine whether or not additional land needs to be added in order to accommodate a 20-year supply of land for housing and employment. And in 2017, the city made the decision to propose that the Cooper Mountain area be added to the urban growth boundary. And there's a process that the city had to go through at Metro in order to make the case that that was appropriate. In 2018, Metro decided that it was appropriate and added the Cooper Mountain Urban Reserve area to the urban growth boundary. And that then kicked off the requirement for the city to do detailed community planning for that Cooper Mountain area. So obviously, 2018 is a while ago, but the planning process is actually pretty lengthy because there is the need to plan for not just new zoning, but also all of the infrastructure and services needed to serve this greenfield development of what's a fairly complex area. The staff also worked with city council to develop some specific goals for the Cooper Mountain area. Planning Commission also contributed to these goals. And it was a little bit of an iterative process, but that was taken on, taken on early in the project because we knew that it needed to be informing not just the ultimate decisions about the project, but really how we approached analysis and identifying options for what could be done in Cooper Mountain. So I'm not going to read through all these goals, but if you are interested in kind of reading through those early planning efforts, the Cooper Mountain Community Plan website on the Beaverton City, City website has a lot of, a lot of information on how the project proceeded from beginning to end. So the zoning that ultimately we ended up with takes a few pretty crucial things into consideration. One of them is that the target number, amount of housing that would be created in this area, there was a number set by Metro when that urban growth boundary expansion was approved, but city council actually wanted to look for ways to provide more than that minimum amount of housing. So rather than a target of roughly 3,600 units, the city council wanted staff to target more like 5,000 units of housing. That was one of the goals that staff was working to as part of this project. Another one of the goals, and again, I said I wouldn't read through all the goals, I'm not going to, but you can see there's a green hatched area on this, on this map. And this represents a natural area overlay. This is, excuse me, they call, it's called a resource overlay, it's in the legend. And this reflects that this geography has a lot of existing mature trees and woodland. There are multiple streams that cross this area. And I think all of you probably, I'm hoping, have visited the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. If you haven't, by all means, go there as soon as possible. It's a really amazing place. But people knew that there was really kind of unique and impressive habitat and natural areas here that really should be considered carefully as the overall area is ready for development. And so this hatched area is, is how the city is going to be kind of recognizing those existing resources. And the regulations that govern development reflect this. There is also a lot of flexibility in the housing development here. The pale yellow area is the Cooper Mountain Residential Mix Zone, which is the lower density version of zoning out here. But it still allows for a lot of flexibility, building, allowing construction of up to six-plex. We don't expect most development to be a six-plex, but there's a lot of flexibility there. We also have higher density areas. We have areas that allow commercial and areas that require commercial development. The city also, through its transportation analysis, actually took a look at where the major street alignments would need to be, not just in order to move people in and out and through the area, but in order to build new streets that would actually be safe and navigable, given the significant slopes in the area. So that was a part of the analysis as well. We also looked at the infrastructure that would be needed in order to develop this area and created a funding plan in order to assess what would be necessary in order to actually create that infrastructure. This slide identifies a few specific projects, infrastructure, infrastructure projects that will be needed in order to do development here. The future water pump station actually is almost complete. We ended up getting some state funding to help complete that, which was fantastic. The sanitary pump station that you're seeing flagged in the lower left-hand corner of the map is actually CWS project. And that also is a project that has funding. I don't think they've broken ground yet, but they are, they are pretty close to being at a point where they're going to construct it. Meanwhile, the Bacchanal Creek Crossing, which is that in the middle, that's a bridge over which is basically a ravine, also needs to carry utilities, the gravity utilities, so the stuff that has to go downhill, so the stormwater and the sewer, that also needs to kind of cross that bridge there. That is likely to be a later piece of infrastructure. So there's going to be able to be development, kind of going up the hill from below and coming down the hill from above, but that crossing is going to be important to complete to really unlock development, full development in the area. So to kind of close up, I just want to quickly note our projects that are underway. Designing Walkable Places is a housing oriented project, but that also is responding to the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities Executive Order from the governor. That will be coming to you for a hearing on September 17th. The code maintenance project is scheduled to come to you for a hearing on October 1st and could then be continued to a second hearing on October 15th, if that is desired. And then, of course, the Go Beaverton Transportation System Plan update is ongoing and will not be ready for decisions for a long time, but we will be coming to you with work sessions periodically over the next couple of years. And then in the future, we expect to do code maintenance again in 2026. And we do expect there to be additional housing implementation, but that transportation system plan update is going to continue to absorb a lot of the resources on the staff side for a few more years. So we don't actually expect to have really significant planning projects that are starting up at the same time as the transportation system plan is still underway. So with that, I will pause and see if folks have any questions or things that they would like to talk about.
Commissioner McAvoy has a question.
Yeah, thanks for that, Anna. That's really helpful context, especially as a, as a new commissioner. I was wondering if, in addition to the sort of two general projects you just mentioned coming up, code maintenance for 2026 and housing implementation, is there anything else coming out of this past legislative session that you all are tracking and thinking about that might eventually mature into a project?
I don't know that there will be something, anything that is a standalone specific project. We have actually already incorporated some state mandates into the 2025 code maintenance project, and we expect that there will probably be some aspects of the 2026 code maintenance that will also be responding to state law. There were a number of legislative, a number of changes to ORS that were adopted that do affect land use and housing, and we are still kind of digesting those. Some of them had effective dates that were immediate, and some of them have effective dates that are in the future. So that, that would be a, we're going to have to get back to on that one. At this point, I don't think that there are any that would require a standalone major project, but, but there will certainly be some code updates that will need to be made to respond to state law from this session. And frankly, we expect there to be more changes in the legislative session in 2026.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Metler.
Again, that, that was really interesting. And I have a kind of question around zoning. And you made a mention where community was concerned that there was going to be a lot of change due to zoning, there was going to be a lot of development projects, and there was, it kind of sounded like when there are development or developers ready, it's like the codes are ready. Can we talk a little bit about like, how you think about as a planner of like trying to get developers like ready to go to break ground on projects or, or start the project discussions once those codes are complete?
That's an interesting question. I guess I would provide a couple of pieces of information before I answer your question more directly. And it also reminds me that, so, and this is something that you, you can actually go do. So on this July, I think it was July 2nd, I did a presentation to council along with Andy Varner, who's the Community Development Director, about housing production in Beaverton. You can look that up and watch the video online. I think, I think you'd find it interesting. We were able to dig into not just how much housing has been developed in Beaverton, but what type of housing and where it's located. So we looked at where is multifamily development happening? Where is single detached development happening? Where is middle housing happening? And, and that, it wasn't surprising to me exactly, but it was also, it was really clear that housing development is primarily happening in two areas, and that is the greater downtown area and South Cooper Mountain. The, the whole rest of the city represents less than a third of development, even though it represents much more than a third of the area. And so with middle housing, for example, there is no middle housing downtown. There's very little middle housing in the rest of the city, but there's actually a significant amount of middle housing in South Cooper Mountain, meaning, you know, that duplex, townhome, triplex type of, type of product. But it's there partly because we require it. We actually require there to be a mix of housing types developed in South Cooper Mountain. And, and the developers are responding to that by building those homes. I don't, I don't mean to say that they would not be building those homes, otherwise town homes are, are a pretty popular development type. But, but infill development, particularly at a small scale, is difficult to pull off. The size means that there's not a lot of efficiency in terms of the costs. And, and it's, it's, it's more difficult to do. So kind of getting around to answering her question, we do include conversations with developers in our planning projects, not always in the same way, but we definitely had conversations with developers as part of the housing, as part of the housing options project, implemented middle housing. We talked with developers about, as part of the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, developed both developers and the property owners out there in Cooper Mountain. And, and, and it's important to, you know, have open communication with the folks who will be actually having to, having to respond to the regulatory requirements to kind of involve them in conversations about that. The other thing I would say is that once zoning is in place, we do really encourage property owners and developers to come in and talk with staff early on as they're, as they're considering development so that we can provide guidance and feedback to help them be successful as they're making those they're making those early decisions about their project. So we want to equip our developers and applicants with useful information about what particular approaches to development may be more successful in particular areas. And it's an open conversation. We learn a lot about those, through those conversations as well, about aspects of the zoning that developers might find more challenging, and those often then will land on a list of amendments that we look to make as part of code maintenance or another project. Does that address the question you meant to ask?
It does, yeah. And I'll go back and look at that presentation at the beginning of July as well. Thank you.
Great.
So Anna, Anna, what stage in the Cooper Mountain Development Project are we in? I know we had talked about annexation, but I don't believe we're anywhere near that. Could you kind of elaborate on that?
Sure. So the community plan was adopted in December 2024, so we are, you know, a little more than half a year after adoption. We have an implementation plan that includes a number of action items, including building out some of the infrastructure, but also kind of preparing to go through that land use process once properties are ready to start developing. We are actually working on annexation. Annexation, though, happens on a property-by-property basis, under state law. It's quite structured, and so it isn't really an option for us to just annex the whole area all at once. So the city actually adopted an updated annexation ordinance in March that provided some more clarity around the procedures that will follow for annexation and how we work with developers. One of the most important questions when it comes to the annexation process is that there's some clarity around how a particular piece of property will be served by infrastructure. In the case of Cooper Mountain, we do have this brand-new adopted infrastructure plan, and so that's really helpful, but we also want to make sure that individual properties are kind of ready to go forward to build the infrastructure they need to develop their property, but also that they understand the expectations for developing infrastructure that will serve the overall area. So for example, when it comes to things that go through pipes, right, whether it's water through water pressure, or whether it's the, you know, the gravity-dependent utilities like sewer and stormwater, they don't stop and start at the edges of properties they need to move through. And so having those systems laid out and setting clear expectations for how each of those pieces on different properties will fit together is part of those annexation conversations. So we do expect to see some annexation happen. You know, I can't say exactly when, because it's a little bit of a process, but it wouldn't be surprising to have some of those properties annexed and starting to come through the land use process within the next nine months to a year. So we're moving, we're working on it. It's going to be a long process, but for South Cooper Mountain, the dynamics were slightly different, because they actually annexed to the city prior to completing the community plan. So once that community plan was adopted, they were immediately filing land use applications. So here, we adopted the community plan first, so the annexation still has to occur, and then they'll be ready to get those land use applications in. It won't be all at once, but we think there are some properties that will probably be moving towards land use within the next year.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
I have one. Like with the Downtown Design Plan, you guys were really targeting redevelopment potential of the auto sale sites along Southwest Canyon there, and I don't believe you guys have had an opportunity to implement anything along that lines, but I've noticed Damaril Ford has vacated part of their property, and I'm curious if there's any plans in process for what's going to happen there.
Not so far. We will see what happens. The development that we've seen since the Downtown Design Project was completed was really more on the, it was not on those auto-oriented sites, it was on some other properties. But we have seen a few things done. I think the most significant is the Madera Beaverton Project, which fronts on Broadway, and that is a pretty large multifamily building with ground floor commercial and structured parking.
Yes, all those sites are so large, there's huge potential associated with them. I was just kind of curious if there was anything in play.
Yeah, not on the car dealership sites specifically, but, you know, there's actually lots of other property that's pretty ripe for redevelopment downtown. Also, you may not be aware of this, but both the city and Bureau, the Beaverton Redevelopment Agency, have acquired property downtown, and this has been happening for many years. It's not just in the last few years, but a number of the pieces of the property that are directly across the street from City Hall between Milliken and Canyon are actually owned by the city. So that would be a future development site where the city would be entering into a development agreement with a developer and kind of going forward in that way. There were some plans already in place. The city did an RFP and selected a developer, but that was right before COVID hit, and as you can imagine, those plans just got a little shaky at that point and ended up getting retired for now. So some of those pieces of property are city-owned in downtown, but there are plenty also that are simply in private hands, and they're waiting for the right time.
Thank you.
Anna, thanks for that update and reporting. If there's no further questions, we will be adjourned. It is 7:25. Everyone, have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Night.